Welcome. Tonight's a special night because we have a series of people here who not only said they'd like to see the school system improve, but they've stood up and said they're willing to help 4,200 of our kids by improving the system. First thing, an apology because Sarah is not here tonight because of a scheduled glitch on my part. We did have this show scheduled to tape tomorrow night and because of my travel, I had to move it to the night before. So please do not take, except for this old man's mistake, anything into the fact we have six out of seven of the people who are willing to help. So we'll start tonight, and tonight's the second thing. I can say we have more than six viewers because we have six that are going to watch just when we're here. But let's start with introductions.
Hello. My name is Tarek Miranda and I went through Milford Public Schools K through 12, graduated in 2014. I'm currently a senior at Lenworth Institute of Technology and I'm running for school committee.
Hello. My name is Chris Wilson. Thank you for having us on the show and putting together this forum for us. I'm a 18-year Milford resident, a father of two Milford students, an eighth grader and a sixth grader. I'm running for school committee and looking forward to our future in the schools.
Hi. Thank you for having me out. Laura Siermacoli and Jemmy and I'm running for school committee. I'm a lifelong Milford resident and a graduate of Milford High School, class of 99. And my husband and I are living in Milford with our three daughters who attend Brookside Elementary School.
Hi Al. My name is Megan Hornberger. I am a graduate also of Milford High School. I'm a PC friar and a Northeastern Husky. I'm also a certified public accountant in Massachusetts and more importantly, the proud mom to three boys. And I would like nothing more than you and all your viewers to pay attention and listen to what we have to say and get out and vote on April 3rd.
My name is Glenn Wyke. I've been a Milford resident for 22 years. I've been in technology for 30 years, first as a software developer and now as an IT consultant. And I would love to be on the school committee and help the team out.
Michael.
Hello, Al. My name is Mike Visconti. I am a lifelong resident of Milford. I'm a self-employed consultant. I have consulted with and advised numerous organizations and boards of directors on financing issues and suggestions on how they might best run their companies. I have been a town meeting member for over 40 years and I'm happy to say that in the over 40 years that I've been a member, I have a 100% attendance record. I have not missed one meeting. I am also a former zoning board of appeals member where I served for 20 years and I'm sorry to say that my attendance there was only 99.5%. The .5% I missed, it was because I was in the hospital with a serious illness and I was unable to attend.
But yet, your family still complains that you demanded they take you to the board meeting.
When I regained consciousness, the first thing I asked my family was to get me to the meeting. And they, after a couple of backhanders to put me back to center, I got the idea that I was not going to that meeting. In any case, I say that because it shows my commitment to a job I take on. And if I am elected to the school committee, I will exercise that same commitment. I will attend every single meeting unless, of course, I'm once again hospitalized, which I'm hoping I will not be.
We hope we missed that. Okay, Chris, you got the lucky number. So Chris, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Thank you for that question. I want everyone's vote in Milford because I have skin in the game. I am a parent of two children that have attended Milford schools throughout and I want to continue to improve their schooling as they move forward into Milford High School and beyond. So I want to ensure that the school system is a safe place, it's an educational place, and that it's staffed to the best of its ability.
Laura.
Thank you. I'm very invested in education. I'm a teacher at Hope deal junior senior high school. I teach 11th and 12th grade currently. And I like to see Milford schools continue to improve. So I'm invested in the school system. I have kids in the school system. As soon as my children entered Shining Star preschool, I started to get involved at the PTO level and then at the school council level. I'm a current member of the Brookside School Council as well. So I want to see our school system continue to improve and for all of our students to get the education that they deserve so they can be the best that they can be.
Thanks, Al. I hope to earn your vote. I believe I'm a hard worker and active listener and an effective collaborator. And I think with three seats open, those are important skills to advance our school district.
As a technologist, I feel like I have a lot to offer. We're moving towards more technology in the classroom with the Chromebook program. And I've seen a lot of technology deployments go successfully and seen a lot fail. And so I provide a different viewpoint than most everybody else. I've also been looking for a different way to get involved with the town. I'm a town meeting member and I'm also a member of the Milford area humanitarian coalition that does the summer lunch program. And this just seemed like another natural place for me to help out the town.
Michael.
I have a little different perspective than some of the other members. I have no children in the system and I view that as a benefit. All of my votes that I take or make when I am on the school, if I am elected to the school committee, will be completely objective and they will be made in what is in the best interest of all of the students in the system and not solely what is in the best interest of my children. And I view that as a definite benefit to being a member on the school committee. I will work hard to ensure that every student, and I mean every student, that graduates from the Milford School District leaves with a quality education so they will be able to compete with the many, many students, graduating students that are out there from other districts on an even par.
Tariq.
I'm running for school committee because, and the people should vote for me, because I'm going to bring a different perspective to the table, having recently graduated from the school system and firsthand experiencing the issues, something which I don't think they can say they've done recently. And I would like to represent, I'd be like, be able to represent all the students and also a big portion of the students who come from all different backgrounds.
Okay, we're going to limit you. First show we had, we asked for what you thought were the three largest challenges. With six of you, you'll be here till the snowstorm ends. So Laura, why don't you tell me two biggest challenges you see facing the school committee and how you would address them?
Okay. So I'd like to start with the college and career readiness. I think it's important that we expand our offerings so that every student can be successful after graduation. So I think that means partnering with, sending up partnerships with local businesses and really establishing us as a premier place to work with other students and work with other businesses and locally. In addition, the social and emotional learning, I think we can expand on those programs. I know that's one of our strategic growth areas, but I think we can do more to make sure that our students are supported so that they're available and ready to learn in the classroom.
Thanks, Al. For me, I think one of the most significant challenges right now is truly just our diverse population. It's certainly not new, but has grown over the past 10 years. And I think it's something we constantly need to be adjusting in terms of how we address. It obviously requires us to allocate our resources so that we're handling and addressing the kids across the spectrum, whether your top performers or just entering our school district don't speak the language yet. And then secondly, I think there are major capital improvements and investments that are coming our way. And so I'd really like to see more emphasis on the long-range planning.
I think Milford suffers from a perception problem and part of it is driven by the MCAS scores and other things that people hear about the school system. They hear a lot of negative things about the school system. And I think we should do a better job talking to parents about the good things going on in the school system. Talk about the programs that are successful. You know, everybody should know about the Chromebook program, but other things that are going on as well that I feel would change people's minds. You know, we have a lot of people that are choicing out of the district and I think it's largely a perception rather than any other reason.
Michael.
Well, once again, year after year, this school choice problem is still with us and we need to do something to correct this school choice issue. And that is more students choosing out of the school than choosing in, which not only gives Milford a bad reputation, but also costs us money. It costs the taxpayers money. We need to, we need to show that we can produce a product. And by producing a product, I mean the end product in a school system is the quality education of the students that leave the system. We need to show families in Milford that we are turning out a quality product, a product that is equal to, not equal to, I should say, better than the product that the surrounding, our surrounding towns are turning out. We need to bring our end product up to the level of towns like Melis, Medway, Franklin, Upton, and Blackstone Valley Tech, believe it or not. Now, Blackstone Valley Tech is a technical school, but they are academic-wise, they are turning out a superior product to Milford. We need to change that. We need to, we need to make Milford turn out the superior product. We also need to address maintenance of our schools. Now, I have prepared and administered numerous preventive maintenance programs and plans for many different schools and many different industrial and commercial buildings. I am very well-versed in preventive maintenance plans and I will work to see to it that preventive maintenance plans for our infrastructure are not only prepared, but that they are carried out. So that 20 years from now, 30 years from now, we're not all sitting here or someone else, other candidates not sitting here talking about, gee, we need a new school because nobody did a thing to maintain the $60 million Woodland school that we built. I will help see to it that all our schools, brand-new schools and older schools are being maintained properly.
Tariq. I'm sorry.
I have prepared and administered numerous multimillion-dollar budgets for numerous organizations, financial institutions, and numerous boards of directors of other organizations. I am well-versed in all kinds of management programs and I would, I would work hard to ensure that the Milford school system is managed in the same respect.
Tariq.
I think two problems we face would be our long-term planning. We, the current school committee seems to be very reactionary to the current problems and kind of take things day by day. There's no public long-term plan to fix the current issues. And another one would be our infrastructure's falling apart in some schools, most schools besides Woodland. It's beautiful, brand-new, but there's a leaking roof in the high school. I've gone from school to school asking teachers about what are the problems and they, all of them have said that the infrastructure's falling apart. It needs to be addressed.
The two major issues that I see from the Milford School Department is certainly the high school being at a Level 3 status. So we need to bring, you know, a Level 3 means that they're performing in the bottom 20th percentile of the state. So certainly we need to bring that back up to the Level 1 status that we know we can achieve here for our students. Certainly, to do that, we need to look at the foundation work below it of all the different grade levels to make sure that we're preparing our students for high school. And certainly that the high school being, becoming a Level 1 is a collaborative effort from every grade level as we progress up to the 12th grade and graduation. Also, social-emotional learning has also been mentioned. It's certainly, school is not just all about reading, writing, and arithmetic, but it is also teaching our children how to work with other children, how to collaborate with other children, how to play with other children and work together. So beyond just, you know, studies, you know, teachers now have that, have to develop students from the emotional side of things. And certainly Lucy Jenkins, who just recently hired a social, or excuse me, will, will be hiring a social-emotional director. I think the right pathway is being established for the Milford schools.
We'll start with a perception. We've heard it a couple times. People are choicing out because the perception is the diversity in Milford keeps their children from getting an optimal education. Truth or fiction? And if it's truth, how would you deal with it?
Sure. I think the first piece that's really hit me, Al, is it seems to me, we always talk about school choice and the numbers around 200. I really would like to look at the number more comprehensively. Let's look at the students that are choicing out. Who's going to BBT? Who's going to a parochial school? Who's going to a private school? Who's going to a charter school? That number's closer to 550 kids and I think we have to look at that whole population to really understand why they're leaving. My instincts tell me we're probably losing some top performers. And so when we talk about Level 3 accountability, if you've lost 300 kids, it would have been in your top 5%. That's obviously going to affect your number. So let's understand why they're leaving and let's start to address that. Personally, I see diversity as an asset. Look around. I think the world is very diverse and so I think our students are served by experiencing that diversity early on. But we certainly do not have a homogeneous population and that means you need to figure out strategic ways to address those needs. And so I think it's a bigger challenge for us because you don't have all the same type of students coming in. And so you need to find ways to address it. Did I answer the whole question?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say, so first of all, I think diversity is a strength of our school system. It's great that students get a chance to interact with a lot of different people from a lot of different cultures because certainly in the work world, they'll have to be able to do that. As corporations become more multinational and scattered all over the world, you have to interact with people from every corner. I know it's not uncommon to have programmers in Romania and people in the UK writing documentation that you'll have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And so being able to interact with everybody is definitely important.
You know, we cannot keep using the diversity in the population as an excuse for not educating our children. And I'll give you a good example. The Wayland, Wayland school system. Wayland has consistently, over the last 15 years, been ranked in at least the top 15 schools in the state, more often than not, the top 10 schools in the state. This year, they were ranked number nine. They bring in inner-city kids as a program to educate. Now, these inner-city kids, a lot of them would rather be getting initiated into their gangs than being in Wayland school studying. But still, even with that, that kind of diversity, Wayland manages to rank in the top nine schools in the state. We should be able to do the same thing. We cannot keep using the excuse of diversity as a reason for not being able to give our kids a quality education. That excuse is burnt out. Thank you.
Al, sorry. If I could just interject, you mentioned that in your last interview and I was really interested in that, Mike. And so I did go on, you know, the Department of Ed's website and it looks like Wayland has about a 4% English learner and a 4% economically disadvantaged. What I would just say is fairly different than our population. And so I totally respect your comment. I would just say if we're comparing, I think we need to look at comparable towns when we make those assessments. Sorry.
Tariq.
I think diversity is an asset. I'm proof of that, that you can, I can prove that, that you can go to Milford schools, go to college, and then go after that. I'll be, I have a job for when I graduate and I will be going to Harvard to get my master's. So I don't see why diversity is being used as an excuse for our underperforming scores.
Just to reiterate, the question was whether the ELL population is affecting our, kind of our general population and...
It's a perception that nobody wants to voice.
Right.
But people have said that, okay, because of the ELL, the diverse, the special needs being so high in Milford, that they're worried it's going to drag down the level of education their children get.
Right. And certainly, ELL is one population, general ed's another population, and special needs is another population. So in specific to the ELL population, you know, if they're affecting test scores, well, we got to look at it from the standpoint of, you know, are they still making effective progress? That test score is just simply a snapshot of that student at that timeframe. We don't know if, you know, if they're new to our country. Have they been in our country for five years or five months? So certainly that's going to affect their progress and how they're going to test. So as long as they're making effective progress through the Milford school system, certainly we keep, you know, keep educating and working with them. Now, is it affecting the general education population? I don't think it is. I mean, I look at both my, my eighth grade son and my sixth grade daughter who are learning and who are, you know, progressing and they are on topic and on standard with their scoring throughout. So certainly, you know, they are, they're being challenged and they're learning and they are in that diverse, you know, population within their class and that diverse population within the school system. And certainly, I think it's going to make them better people as they get older.
I would agree with Chris. I think we have very highly qualified teachers in our classrooms that are doing a really great job to address the needs of every student in the classroom. And so we need to give them the right tools so that they can be, you know, successful and so they can get every student to reach their full potential. I think, again, our diversity is a strength, definitely. And I think like other people outside of our world, if we're in a global society, a global world, we want our students to get exposure to different, people with different backgrounds and different populations.
Now, we, in fact, we fund the school system at about 62% of our budget. We've been taking everything into consideration. Because I know everybody says, well, it's only about 40-some, but health benefits are paid for for the teachers by the town. The mortgages, the bonds to pay off Woodland and the schools are paid for by the town. And then we have ELL and special needs is a special bucket that's paid for on actual. And then we have the normal, you know, the day-to-day. Fundamental question in your mind, are we funding our school system adequately?
I would say we're a little on the short side. If you compare us to other communities with diverse populations and communities where there are more economically disadvantaged kids, we're probably, you know, $500 to $1,000 per student below the funding of other districts. So I think we should be looking to make sure we provide more money for the school system and catch up a little bit. And I think now, especially while the economy is good, we should give as generous an increase as we can.
Part two of that, how would you fund it? How would you fund? You're saying you think we ought to increase?
Yes.
The school system? How?
Well, I'm certain we'll get a bump in Chapter 70 funding, which is what we've been getting for some time. But I don't see any reason why we shouldn't increase taxes just a little bit to do that because we haven't really been increasing taxes over the last decade or so. And in fact, we, we cut them during the last financial difficulties we had. So I think that in order to really get the kind of school system that we want, we should invest more.
Michael, are we funding the school system adequately? And if not, how would you go about increasing the funding?
Our school is definitely adequately funded. Now, I deal in facts, not emotions. Facts indicate that what we spend per student in Milford is well above the average across the state. So there is no reason in the world why we can use money as an excuse for not educating our children. No reason in the world. They're amply funded and there's no reason in the world to raise taxes to fund the school anymore.
Tariq.
I would say that the school is adequately funded and we don't need to raise taxes because we're funding them correctly. We just have to be more efficient with how we spend the money for the students, on the students.
Okay.
I also agree that, you know, I believe that we, we are at a good average, from the state average, per student, around that $13,500 per student. You know, times 4,200 students, that's where you can get into the daunting number of $60-plus million. But that's 4,200 customers that we have. So certainly, we've got to make sure that we're always looking at, from a line by line, that we're being efficient with our, with our spending. And certainly, we look at all programs and making sure that all programs are efficient and that every student is having adequate amounts of money allocated to their needs throughout the school process. So yes, again, I believe we're, we're there, but it always needs to be reviewed year-to-year to ensure that the money is being, being spent appropriately.
Ms. Laura.
Excuse me. I agree with that. I think we need, I think we are adequately funded. I do think we need to look at everything and make sure that we're being efficient and that every program is where we want it to be and just kind of looking at everything to see what, where we're impacting the greatest number of students.
Fiscal responsibility is certainly a key component of this job as it relates to the school committee's budget. I spend as much time as possible on the budget subcommittee meetings, meeting with Kathy Perry, who's been a fantastic resource. I think overall, it is adequately funded, Al. What I would like to understand is, okay, if we put another, you know, X amount of dollars, we could do this much more math intervention, which we think would increase our scores by X. I would like to understand that a little bit more before I said, there's no more money that I think we should give. I think overall, it is adequately funded, but it's always a matter of understanding what else could you potentially do.
Michael, we talk about BBT. We talk about how do we address the needs of our entire student population? And I know all of you heard my story, you know, people like my father who were wizards with tools, but not academicians. So now the fundamental question comes out. Are we addressing the needs of all of our children? And if not, how, how would you approach doing that?
Well, we cannot lose sight of the main reason that we go to school and that is for academics. Now, what we have to make sure that our students leave our school district with is a full understanding and a, and a good handle on the three R's: reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I, and I know that arithmetic, or math, has certainly changed over the years. And by the way, I will include the sciences in that also. But if they leave our, our district proficient in those four areas, then the students that would like to go into the trades, maybe a carpenter or a plumber, if they can't add or if they can't read, they are not going to be a success, a success as a carpenter or a plumber. You need that core understanding of reading, writing, and arithmetic, excuse me again, arithmetic, to do any of those, of those things. If you can read, you can learn anything. But if you can't read, then you pretty much cannot do anything.
But if I want to be a tradesman, do I have the opportunity in the Milford school system to do that?
Well, Milford, once again...
Including BBT because BBT is part of the Milford school system.
Well, it is and it is not, but you could argue that, but it is and it is not. Blackstone Valley Tech, being a vocational technical school, still turns out academically a superior student to the Milford school system. That to me is unacceptable. I mean, I'm happy that it's happening and I'm happy that BBT is doing that, but it's unacceptable as far as I'm concerned and we need to correct that problem.
Tariq.
I believe we need to be able to, at least at the high school level, maybe not K through 8, but at the high school, definitely, we need to give them the options to learn about these different trades. Because like you said, your father, and there's many other students in our school system who have no desire to go to college or don't think it's for them or maybe can't afford college. So they, they should, we should be able to at least introduce to them plumbing, electric, how to be electrician, and the, not all the trades, but many trades and show them that's a viable option for after-school to be gainfully employed.
And are we allowing them to explore that now with our current system?
The current system has just the hospitality program and I was talking to the principal at the high school. He's trying to get in a, another program there. He just, he just needs space for it. I don't know exactly what it was. He was just telling me he's looking to get the trades more back into the schools. Nothing specific. He's just trying to get it back.
Chris?
Well, certainly, BBT has become a very challenging and a school to get into for all students. You know, they have a 93% success rate for, for post-secondary colleges for, for children, so, for students. So we've got to look at Milford. Are we preparing the Milford students for life beyond the 12th grade? And does that include, you know, different vocational programs that aren't actually offered at BBT? Certainly, we can't, you know, compete with the BBT and the programs that they have, but we can look at other programs for the Milford students, much like the hospitality program. And I think it would be beneficial for students that might not necessarily want to go the college route. They haven't really decided yet. So, you know, are we preparing them for life beyond 12th grade? Are they, you know, do they have a grasp on what the financial world will be like for them? So it's important to, beyond the normal reading, writing, and arithmetic, to ensure that they can sustain themselves in the world beyond 12th grade.
And you know, when you look at it, you know, when you say plumbers, biotech certainly drives a large part of our economy. A manufacturing operator in a purification plant, glorified plumber, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, what are they looking at? They're looking at maintaining pipes and systems and controls. And those jobs start at 50, 60 grand. So you know, you don't have to go to college. You don't have to be a certified electrician or plumber to land an operator position. And 55, 60 grand, not a bad job to start. You know, and as you mentioned, BBT's challenging because if you're not in the top, what, 15% of the academic class, you're not going to get in. At least that's my understanding. So again, I worry about, you know, the people who... So again, I worry about, you know, the people who are smart, but in not an academic way. What are we doing for them? But Laura?
Well, so I don't think we have to be a vocational high school to prepare our students and get our students prepared for these kinds of opportunities that you just mentioned. I think as a comprehensive high school, we can do, we can do a lot for our students and give them these kinds of opportunities. So I think creating pathways similar to the banking and similar to the hospitality and tourism, I think we can do pathways for the construction industry and pathways for computer science as well. So I'd like us to see us do more of those. But I think really importantly, we need to be preparing our students for the real world and teaching them those employability skills, communication, professionalism, work ethic, time management. Those skills are really important, and even if they decide not to go right into the workforce after graduation, and they decide to go into college, those skills will transfer well into any career that they choose. So I think that we can do that at the high school level. I think the finance piece is important, too. I think teaching them financial skills at an early age is really important. It helps them to think about, you know, their future, but also help them be prepared once they get that job so that they can be a successful member of society.
When I went to MHS, which I think Tariq pointed out was a long, long, long time ago, either you were on the college track and you stayed in Milford.
Oh, for the love of God!
You can allude to that, I will say.
None of you qualify!
But you either stayed in Milford because you were on a college track, or you went to BBT because you were looking more at a certain trade. And I definitely think that that has changed. You know, when I met with Principal Josh Ottlin, he used a term which just really resonated, "Our goal is to set these children up for life success." And so we need to figure out the universe of what that involves. I think unfortunately, with today, the cost of college education, Al, in a lot of cases, it may not make sense, because to leave with 30, 40 more, you know, $1,000 in debt, that's not helping a potential student. So we need to be looking at the gamut of what we can offer that will prepare these children for future success.
I would also like to see some more variety of courses in school that would prepare our kids for future success. You know, double-entry bookkeeping and accounting, also some economics or some basic business courses, just some basic things that I think would help them in the future. I'd also like to see, since you brought up BBT, I'd like to see our relationship changed a bit with BBT, because I think if they're just taking the top students, it's really defeating the purpose of having a vocational school. I'd like to see them have, well, us to have more say over who gets placed in BBT, whether it's based on economic background or other backgrounds, where kids who really may not want an academic future, but may want to go into those trades, that they have more access to those vocations.
Tariq, in the papers and the media, a lot of parents read about security issues. Fundamental question, somebody says, if I send, you're sending two children, sending three children into the Milford school systems, are they safe? Are there things we should be doing? I mean, you know, you've got people across the country saying, put a bazooka in every kid's hands and we'll take care of it. I mean, that's kind of extreme, but are Milford kids safe? And should we be doing other things to make them safer?
I would say Milford students are safe. Most schools have double-entry doors. You first, you can't even, you can't even get into the first one without being seen through a camera that you have to buzz in through. And should we, we should look at any available opportunity. There's, I was looking online, there's a school in Ohio, and they have live feeds with the police station, and they have this eye-hurting gas that they can come, that they can throw out of the ceiling, and if there's an incident happening, they can corner them, and the police know exactly where he is at all times if something's going on in the school. I think maybe we could look into that, and there's too many things and too many variables to this, yeah.
Do I think our schools are generally safe? I do. I mean, certainly, I drop my kids off every day with the utmost confidence that at the end of the day, they're coming back home. You know, we have a police force that looks over at our schools, we have school resource officers that are within our schools. You know, certainly, as a school committee member, I would want to always be talking to the Milford police force and having them always constantly assess our safety, whether it's just, you know, having drills and having someone maybe try to get into our schools that's plainclothes. So always to be alert, you know, but certainly, you know, I feel we are generally safe. You know, we have different protocols in place to keep our children safe. We also have a very open school environment when it comes to recess times. So certainly, there, you know, we always are looking at our schools to make sure they are safe. And if the chief of police comes to me as a school committee member and says that we need to enhance certain infrastructure around our schools to make them safer for all students of Milford, then certainly, I'm on board for that.
Yes, I generally think the Milford schools are safe, yes. I, like Chris, drop my students off or my kids off at school every day and feel as though they're safe. As a school committee member, I would continue to work with law enforcement and our administrators and everybody and make sure that we are, you know, constantly re-looking at things and communicating to parents and families about what our protocols are and the safety measures that we're taking, making sure that we're communicating that out.
I think it's heartbreaking that it actually has to be a discussion that we have in conjunction with schools, because it's just really unfortunate, but it is today's world. Certainly, like Chris and Laura, I drop the people who are most important in my life off every day, so certainly, I feel that they are safe. I actually think that some of the work we're doing on the social-emotional learning front is actually really important in this regard, because if you go back to, you know, historically, where some of the incidents have happened, there's been cases where they were sort of, they had identified problem children that unfortunately, you know, ended up being the perpetrators in some cases. And so I think to the extent that we can engage our students and keep them connected to the community, we're doing the best we can, and certainly, in conjunction with law enforcement, training and practicing where possible.
I think they're safe, and I think it's all really about striking the right balance. I mean, we want the schools to be about learning and yet provide at least enough safety for everybody to make sure that they're, they feel safe. We just don't want to turn our schools into armed fortresses or having armed guards in the hallway and things like that. It just seems like a bit of overkill. We just, we just have to strike the right balance, and as long as we're in touch with the administrators and going over the protocols and making sure that we have all our I's dotted and our T's crossed, I think that's, that's fine.
Michael?
You're safe until you're not. So, you know, the people in Sandy Hook, they thought they were safe. They thought they had a safe school. You never know. Would I arm the teachers? Absolutely not. Who's to say a teacher does not get up on the wrong side of the bed one morning and start shooting people? That is not the, that is not how you resolve a problem like that. Low-profile professional security, yeah, that could be investigated. Low-profile, I don't want people walking around with, you know, M16s on their shoulders, for sure. But some sort of low-profile security measures is certainly something that could be investigated. Now, speaking of safety, another safety issue brought to my attention last week, school bus safety in Milford. Milford did not make the top 100 safest school bus districts in the state. Now, I don't know why. I would certainly look into that and find out why we are not in the top 100 safest school bus rankings in the state. I would have, I would have to look into that more. I have not yet, but I will.
Good question for Dr. Moore Cohen.
But I will.
Because you can't get somebody more committed to our kids than Lenny and his crew. And if we're in, you know, not in the top 100...
Now, keep in mind, I have not, I have not verified the source of my information on that. I just, someone brought it to my attention the other day, and I promised them that even if I was not elected to the school committee, I would look into that, because I'm very interested in knowing why we are not in the top 100.
I mean, there's just certain things, like, you know, if you said that food at the high school wasn't what you expect, Mother Carla would probably come at you.
It's probably better than you expect.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know.
It was very good.
Food quality, mm, I don't know that Carla would not take it personally. And safety or efficiency of the bus system, you know, it's hard when you go to Lenny and everything's about the kids. So that'd be interesting to find out. Okay, magic wand appears, and you can add one program to the school system. What would it be?
It's a great question. I think I would keep enhancing the social-emotional learning. Certainly, it's on the forefront. We just hired a new director, or hiring a new director for that, so I think that director's going to need to expand.
I need to ask you, social-emotional learning.
Yes.
And when I grew up with Paul Revere and the other people, because, yeah, we were the first, we were the first out of the high school, so nobody here has seniority over my class at Milford High. But social-emotional, you did what was socially right, or emotionally, your father looked at you and scared you into reality. What is social-emotional learning?
So to me, what's social-emotional learning, the way it's explained to me?
And I'm not taking the wind out of your sails. I'll ask you the same question.
Certainly. You know, it's teaching our children how to get along with other children, how to work with other children, how to collaborate with other children. So above and beyond just having your, having focused down on a book and reading, or focused down on a sheet of paper and doing math problems, it's how to collaborate with other students in your class. And, you know, so is it working on projects together? Is it working one-on-one to problem solve? So again, it's not hyper-focusing on necessarily what the task at hand, but how to collaborate with your classmates and be a part of that collaboration effort to work as a group and be a team player.
So I think it's, you know, building upon the resilience, you know, so making sure that the student has the resilience to kind of continue forward and do the best that they can do. It's having empathy, and I think some of those skills are really important for our students, pre-K through 12th grade. So as far as a budget line item, it can be professional development for our teachers, it can be curriculum, it can be social workers in the schools. Those are some of the things that we might think about adding, and that we have been adding to our district. So I would agree with Chris on the social-emotional piece. I would also like to see elementary enrichment. I think that would be my other item. So maybe that's foreign language. I think especially at the elementary level, we don't have it, and we had, used to have it a number of years ago. I think it's important for our students to at least get exposure to another language.
No influence from Senior Orsay on that one?
No. No, but I think it's important. You know, like we said before, we're a global society, and I want our students to have, you know, be the best they can be and be prepared for the future. And I think that's understanding other cultures and backgrounds and learning those backgrounds and learning the language.
If you came in with the magic wand tomorrow, Al, I think I would survey our teachers and say, what's number one on your list? Because I think I have an idea, but I don't think that's the right solution. I think I should be surveying those that have been doing it for five or 10 or 25 years. I don't think my two months of sort of digging in would be fair.
I would like to see a robust civics program. You know, we, we prepare our kids for a career in the working world, but we don't really do a great job preparing them to be good citizens. So I would like to see them learn a bit more about our own structure here in town, how everything works, how things work at the state level and at the, at the national level. And I'd also like them to know about a lot of key decisions, Supreme Court decisions that have led to where we are, so that they understand context, because things are happening now. A lot of things are happening fast on a national level, and they should really understand the context for all those things.
It depends on where the magic wand gets the money from. If it gets it from within the current budget, then yes, certainly. What I would like to see is an enhancement of the programs that will, that will help with our reading, writing, and arithmetic programs, to turn out a better student who, with a, with a, with a student who is proficient in those areas, will be able to get a job at a hotel, okay, and move up from there. Go to a hotel, try to get a job if you can't read or can't write, see how far you get. You need to be able to read and write, and I don't mean C. Dick Run, C. Jane Run. I don't mean that kind of reading. I mean, reading, reading. That is what we need to do. If the money is a one-time grant of some type, and we, I am not in favor of adding a program with that, because next year, when we don't get that, that grant money, what's going to happen? Oh, well, we have to increase the budget now to support that program. I do not agree with that. If we can work within the current budget without burdening the taxpayers any further, then yes, those are the areas that I would try to enhance.
And I think on that line, we're pretty safe, where, you know, we start with, we got the best educators, the best program, we have the most efficient use, but here's your 62%. So, you know, to your point, you want to add a program? Great idea. Here's your 62%.
Do what you want with it.
Right.
Do what you want with it.
Now...
But you're not getting any more.
One of the things that drove us for the longest time was a comprehensive ed plan. And as a resident, as a FinCom member, we've been asking for the plan. Everybody, a lot of people, everybody chipped in, a lot of people criticized, other people lauded the old plan, but it got us through Brookside, got us through Middle School East, Woodland. We had a plan. We don't have one yet, and it's been a year and a half, two years, since the old one ran out. Why?
I couldn't tell you that, but I would love to, you know, see one. I'd like to see us get one, so I can review that. And if I get elected to the school committee, I would definitely do my part and make sure I, you know, read everything, make sure I look over everything, look over the numbers, and make good decisions, and hopefully, work to the best of my ability within the budget.
Accountability is key. I think accountability, you know, from the administration and also from the school committee, so I think we also need to be held accountable. Certainly, there were, you know, longer-term facilities plans available in the past. I would like to see even a more comprehensive plan, Al, that includes, you know, measures of effectiveness that are in place today in terms of how do they incorporate into the facility? So not only the facilities themselves, but what are you doing on an educational standpoint? So that would be one thing I would love to see developed.
I would like to see a longer-term plan developed as well. I think that, you know, we've been doing some firefighting, and I think we really need a long-term vision for what we want the school system to be, so.
Plans are fine. I agree with having plans, long-term and short-term, but there's a caveat. You need to stick with the plan. You can't...
Didn't we stick with the last one for like 15 years?
We did. I'm not saying we did not stick with it, I'm just saying you have to stick with it. There are some that, you know, you tend to waver away from the plan. You waver away on one aspect of a plan, and it disrupts the whole end goal of the plan. Need to stick with it.
I think we need a long-term plan, and we need to address the infrastructure of our schools, the growing diversity and why we're failing them academically, and that's the big, the two big things for me right now.
Certainly, every school council, from Woodland to Brookside, to Stacy, to Memorial, every year, they're tasked with creating a school improvement plan. And that school improvement plan is brought right to the school committee and presented to the school committee. And typically, that school improvement plan usually hinges on the district-wide plan. So it's very important for a district-wide plan to be in place so that each school can, again, use that to go forward with their school improvement plans. And those school improvement plans, although they're done every year, certainly have one-year goals, but also five-year goals. So it's important for our district to be able to give a comprehensive, long-term plan that every school out there will be, the school council will be able to use out there to continue on with their school improvement plans. And, you know, when we look at facilities, that's always going to be important, but facilities are just facilities. They don't have any emotion. You know, what's within the facility, the teachers, the students, that's the most important thing. Woodland was a great school, the old Woodland School was a great school, and it with great staff before the new Woodland School was built. Now, it's just much, has much more and better tools for those teachers, so it's made it an even better school. But certainly, you know, we've, we have to work together as a committee to continue on and grow our school system.
You're about, three of you are about to enter the world of four, where the world at the school committee revolves around getting four or three colleagues plus you, four people, to agree on a policy. This is the first time that I can remember that we're having a tectonic shift, where all of a sudden, we have three brand-new people coming on to a school committee. What do you see the change and the challenge that you would have as one of the three new people coming on?
Yeah, I think getting up to speed is always a challenge, Al, right? So now, you have almost half of the committee who doesn't have that kind of historical knowledge. So, you know, taking the time to kind of read through documents and watch all meetings to just garner as much information as possible. Certainly, that's time-consuming, and that's one of the challenges, because three of us won't walk in day one knowing everything that happened over the past three years. So I think that would be a big challenge.
I think for me, it's just as much as interacting with the existing members and learning what makes them tick and what they find important. And I think generally speaking, the school committee right now is all on the same page, and they've been working very well together. So for me, it's partly just being part of the team.
I can work with anybody. I, as I have said earlier, I have worked with numerous boards of directors in other areas, and I have not hesitated to compromise if it is in the best interest of the end result. And the end result here is the education of our students. And the end result here is the education of our students. So if it's a matter of compromising to get that end result, I would not hesitate.
Tariq.
The biggest challenges we would face would be getting up to speed and getting to know what everyone has, everyone has a different idea, there's seven people there, there's probably 30 different ideas in those seven people, and getting that one idea for four to vote on and move forward with, it's probably the most challenging thing.
I think it's going to be challenging, because we, you know, when we come into school committee, whoever that may be, we're going to come in with a new perspective. So it's going to be challenging to, as we bring that new perspective and getting the other four members on board with that perspective, and certainly, being able to market your perspective, be passionate about it, and be able to bring everybody on board of why you feel it's going to be in the betterment of the Milford school system.
So I'm looking forward to hopefully joining the committee, you know, with two other people besides myself, and learning with those people, and learning with the people who are already on the committee, and doing the best I can and being a hard worker and working collaboratively.
Okay, I'm going to run the risk of being rude, but I'm going to hold you all to 60 seconds. Glenn, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
I feel I bring a very different perspective than anybody else on the school committee as a technologist for 30 years. I'm someone who would love to help the school committee and the school system meet their technology goals.
Michael, one minute.
I can do it in less than one minute. I can tell you now that if I am elected, I will be committed to the job, and I will work harder than anybody, and I mean anybody, to see to it that all of our students get a quality education. Thank you.
Should you vote for me, Al? Because I represent, I'd say, I can represent the entire school population, and also, I'm very close with the good 27% who are ESL, and I can represent them, I hope, a little better than the other candidates can, and I did bring a different perspective to this, to the table, younger, different, and that's why you should vote for me.
I want the Milford voters to vote for Chris Wilson for the school committee, because, again, I have two students that go to Milford schools, I have many friends out there that have children that go to Milford schools, so my goal is to make Milford schools the best they can for my children and for my friends' children. You know, I want to piggyback my involvement with Brookside Council, Woodland School Council, and the Stacy School Councils to help create diverse plans that are going to look at a long-range plan for the Milford school systems and basically create Milford schools back up to a Level 1 status, which we know we can be in.
As a teacher and a mom and also a former businesswoman, I really want to be part of the Milford school committee. I bring a lot to the table using my experience, I hope to better our strength in our school system and better our school system, and strive so that every student can be successful. Thanks, Al. I believe I'm a hard worker, an active listener, and an effective collaborator, which will be important skills as three new members step onto the committee. I've also been committed to community service in the schools in the past six years, and I'd like to take that to the next level.
Now, to be fair, I'm going to cut a couple minutes off the show, because I'll never get six people to answer a question with only a couple minutes to go. But I do want to thank you. Sincerely, thank you. Anne Sarah, who wanted to participate, see, I got the name right. As long as I didn't say Sarah Hornberg, I'll be okay. But too many times, you hear people saying, "It should be better," whether it's the FinCom, the Selectmen, the world in general, "It should be better." But my hat's off, because you're helping my 4,200 kids by saying, "Not only do I think it should be better, I'm willing to step up and try and make it better." So thank you for volunteering, thank you for making a difference in this town. Tonight, I can say to our 12 viewers, because we've got our six loyal viewers out there and six here, I won't ask you to vote for any of these candidates, because it's not my place to ask you to pick one, two, or three. I will beg you to get out and vote, as I always do, and to be an educated voter. Get to know each of the seven people, figure out which one best represents what you believe is best for your children. I know I will pick three that I believe is best for my 4,200 Milford kids. More than that, we can't ask. And when you see these people, just say thank you. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering to help out. And as always, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, may God bless, and thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you.